The April 6th regular meeting of the Putnam County School Board is now in session. We'll have the pledge allegiance to the flag by Mrs. Jane Crawford and we'll have the infocation by Pastor Carl Flag, Mount Taber First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us reverence our hearts to God. Gracious Father, we bow our heads and humble our hearts before you. We come to God before your presence with an attitude of appreciation for things being as well as they are. For Lord, as we go through these unprecedented times and we face unprecedented decisions, we ask you dear God to give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Lord, bless each of our school board members. We thank you for their tireless efforts to enhance education and opportunity in this our own community. We thank you, Lord, for our superintendent. We thank you for all of our principals, our district staff. We thank you for guidance, counselors, and all of our teachers and support staff, those heavenly Father who give of themselves around the clock to ensure that our future is brighter. Lord, so much must be done, yet we've accomplished so much in these times past. We ask you to please extend your grace, extend your mercy, and let your comforting hand be upon each of us. Lord, our school board members must make decisions today just as they have in times past. Grant them patience, perseverance, and authority to do what is right, what's good, what's acceptable, and what's pleasing in your sight. Lord, we ask you, God, to bless the parents of every student in this district. Heavenly Father, give them a cooperating spirit. Help them to understand that with all of the modifications that are being done, it's all in the very best interest of our future, our students. Lord, let the words of our mouth, the meditation of our hearts, be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, our strength and our redeemer. And dear God, we ask a very special blessing upon member Jane Crawford as she's recuperating, dear God, from her procedure. God, let the healing process be expedited and let all we do bring honor and glory to your name. This is your servant's prayer. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We have three presentations this evening. The first, recognition of a Placa High School wrestler by Coach White.
Coach, you want to come right over here?
He forgot his speech just today. This is McKay Harvey, a sophomore in Placa High School. This year he placed sixth in the state tournament. He made it to the semifinals the first day, made him the automatic placer. It's our first placer in state in, how was it in the paper? I want to say fifteen years now. We've had kids go to state every year, almost every year. This is the first one that's made it that far. This kid is, I've known this kid two years now through swimming, through wrestling for both years, high energy. But I'll tell you one thing, everybody talks about how, well, I've talked about a lot, kid's got a lot of talent, he's got a lot of skill, and he's just scrappy. One thing we keep forgetting to mention, he's put the time in. He's still putting in time, and he's still going to practices at other schools even yesterday. And he'll probably leave here and go to practice somewhere, if I'm not lying. So, kid's done a good job. He's got two more years. I expect to see him there two more times.
Want to get a picture?
Coach White, could you and McKay, we'd like to have a picture. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Okay, now from Crescent City High School, the welding and ROTC instructors, Master Sergeant Pelahatch and the welding teacher Terry Medic Bell are going to give us a presentation on the sign at Crescent City.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Master Sergeant Pelahatch. Superintendent.
Thank you.
Mr. Bud Ennis. Ms. Jane Crawford, you say hey to that colonel of yours.
Okay.
Holly won't come out for me. You say hey to Bill. Mr. David Buckles, you were the superintendent when I got here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Ms. Sandra Garry.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so I was at Crescent City, I was the facilitator of this, of this sign to bring dignity to Crescent City High School. Crescent City High School is out in the middle of, in the open area, and I'm also a Raider. I wasn't from this school, but as part of teaching citizens to be better citizens. This guy right here, he was one of my cadets too way back in the day. Now he's the welding instructor. And I want to totally thank, and let me just introduce, Mr. Terry Medic Bell, former cadet and welding instructor. This is our battalion executive officer, which is Major Bailey Medea. This is Master Sergeant Jason Craig Crozick. And this is our new SAI, Senior Army Instructor, which is Major John Gavigan, if he goes otherwise known as Jay. This was the project, as you see right there, members, of a sign that was, I was one of my ideas, but I was only facilitator. I want to thank these guys, the welders and the cadets that put in countless hours. Yes, I will tell you this right now, the JRTC, and those two guys right there, those two cadets right there, they spent countless hours making over a thousand dollars. We made twenty-one hundred dollars for Daytona field trip to do the kindergart at that last Daytona race. In fact, we're going to do another one in August, I need your approval, sir. August the 28th, we're starting up again. But we earned all that money, every bit of that over a thousand dollars. Now, that's all coming from us. We didn't ask the school for nothing. So, we put in a lot of hours. Now, Mr. Terry Medic Bell, come here. This guy right here and his guys, over two hundred hours. So, really, how much you think this thing has really worked? Ten to thousands?
Oh, seven thousand.
I mean, it's just, it's a lot of money. And as you guys see, for y'all in the audience that don't see it, y'all probably seen in the paper, this is what we built. We actually from ground zero, we didn't, we didn't do this with machinery. So, I'm going to leave it to you. You speak on your behalf, please.
So, we had about fifteen students, maybe over the course of a hundred fifty, two hundred hours. Everything was transferred from a sketch into a template onto flat pieces of steel and round bar where the students had to do everything by hand between cutting, prepping, finish work, grinding, welding, shaping, heating up the metal, and everything to match the template. And everything got put together. We ended up sandblasting and powder coating it, then painting, built the, helped the JRTC build the foundation and set up a supporting post and hang our sign. Like I said, we had twenty students working on it countless hours every day after school. They would come in on weekends, during class, whenever we could find the time and the hours around them working on their certifications to make this happen over the course of the past two years and around COVID with the distancing thing we needed to do. And everything came together and it came out great for second and third year students participating in this.
Well, I want to thank the welding, definitely. I paid for all their stuff, like I said. I'm not going to sit there and have them pay for it and then, uh-uh, that's not how we work, so.
I love the partnership between ROTC and the welding, that's, can't say enough about that.
It was great. We were, we were down there dirty, dirty with them doing the cement. I'm going to have some of these guys talk about that. But yeah, we were working hand in hand with them. I mean, because these are people they didn't know, superintendent, and now we work teamwork. And like we said, like he was saying, this was on, in classroom, of course, this was, this was so many hours even putting it together. I mean, there's just countless hours that we put it. We didn't really have to. This was also part of our service learning project, and most service learning projects really only do three to four hours. And yet, we did what, about a good two, two hundred?
Yeah.
You know, so anyways.
So, have some other folks that can share?
Come on, the Chinese, oh. Speak on your, speak on what you did out there.
Okay, so what days? We worked one in the day in September and then another day, right?
About a month later.
Yeah, so, the first day, we went in and we dug kind of a little.
Foundation?
The foundation. We prepped the foundation to build our sign. We had to make sure everything was level, so it took just a few hours just to get the foundation right. That way, when we put the sign down and we laid the cement, it would all be even and it wouldn't, you know, sit crooked. So.
What did you learn?
A lot of things that you're, I mean, I learned, obviously, I guess, I just learned teamwork, you know?
So, did you lay visqueen down on the ground before you poured the concrete?
Yes, we dug, made sure everything was level. We set up rebar and just support there. That way, when we did lay the cement, it wasn't, you know, we knew it was going to stay.
Tell everybody how heavy those bags were.
Oh, you mixed your own cement?
Yeah, we mixed the cement. We borrowed a cement mixer from.
One of my friends?
One of his friends.
Very good.
Did every cadet have to participate?
Not every cadet, no.
Not every cadet, it was a select few cadets, all the ones that could really make it.
It was basically COVID back then, so these volunteered.
Well, one of the, one of the things we do use the crest for now is, because I walked into the tail end of the project, I've only been here since November. So, we'll bring our classes out and discuss project, project management, you know, and feed the kids. This is, this is something that we want you to do before you leave the school, you know? Leave a legacy, right? So, it rolls right into a lot of the coursework.
Well, they'll be able to see that for decades to come and know that you had something to do with that, so that's remarkable.
No, our biggest thing is, the biggest downfall in this all was that after it was all done, the only thanks we ever got was over the intercom from our principal, and no one else has mentioned anything. And we see people that speak with Master Sergeant Pelahatch that know and have seen the paper every day, and none of them have yet, have yet to say thanks.
And that's why they're here.
Yeah, we're saying thanks.
Thank you, it's beautiful. I'm going to drive up there to see it personally.
He got sick today, yeah. It wasn't able to make it.
His uncle owns it, yes. What's his office name?
Robbie.
Robbie, yeah, I was, I was his principal.
Can we get, can we get a picture? You have some other information?
Well, I got, I got to do grunt work. I'm Jason Crozick, cadet master sergeant.
He's in trouble for forgetting his uniform.
Yeah, I did forget my uniform, but I enjoyed the whole experience. I thought that it was a good use of time to get stuff done, use skills that you can use other places in life. You know, school tries to do that, but you know, not everything works out like that. I think it was a great usage of time. Definitely hard, eighty pound bags of concrete, not that fun to carry around. Digging holes for the, the footing for the concrete wasn't that fun either, but afterwards, it's one of those things, you know, we weren't having that much of a fun time doing, but afterwards, you, you budgeted.
Lot of pride, yep, that's good. Well, thank you guys so much for doing that, and if you haven't had a chance to board, if you get a chance to drive down there, you can't miss it, right? Right out there in front?
Right, this picture really doesn't, it doesn't do it justice because it's so, it's so painted whatsoever, and it's very bright and, it's, it really is. And publicly, thank you because you made the campus better.
And then again, some of the, some of your peers may assume that looking at what you've done is such a great job, they may have assumed that you all hired somebody to come and do it, so you all need to let them know that you all put in the manpower, you know, the blood, sweat, and tears behind it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll get down there to see it, that's a promise.
Can we get a photo? Could all of you stand up here? Ashley, you want to? Yeah.
I think you and Rick want to get down there with them?
I think it's hard for Rick to get a.
You want to? Yeah, I ain't going to get a board chair myself. Especially since she's from the Crescent City area. I love that. Congratulations.
Take your mask off for the picture.
You ready?
You want to take your mask off? Just hold your breath. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Yes.
Members.
Okay, now, our last presentation is, is it North Florida Association of School Psychologists? Northeast Florida, okay. Our Psychologist of the Year, Julie Sloan, by Felicia Proya and Susan Hatcher.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for letting us present this award to Julie this evening. Northeast Florida Association of School Psychologists, we recognize school psychologists that are doing outstanding work in their school districts. They are leaders in the field, they are making an example, and they are inspiring the next generation of school psychologists. What we provide in the schools is irreplaceable. We support all throughout the classroom, through administration, and working with students one-on-one. So, when we received Julie's nomination, we were ecstatic to have somebody with years of experience that really deserved to be recognized. Julie's been with Putnam County for twenty years or has twenty years of experience, and something that struck me through her candidate statement was that she works with practicum students and internship students, and this is very important. The field of school psychologist, we need more people. We need more young people interested in going into undergraduate to support students in education and to go to that, you know, next step of graduate school. And part of that graduate training is receiving that practicum supervisor and receiving that internship feedback, which as somebody who is fairly recent in the field, graduating in 2016 from Florida State, I appreciate an internship supervisor very much because it was a critical piece of becoming a school psychologist myself. So, I'm very pleased to present this award. Julie will now be nominated for our Florida School Psychologist of the Year, which our organization has recently had our previous nomination has received that award. So, we've got a pretty good track record, so we were very excited to select Julie. She's a leader in Putnam County, and she's doing the work that needs to be done. She does things outside of her time to be accredited and just staying up to date on all the technology and all that's needed to be as effective as we can be. So, this is for Julie.
Congratulations.
Could Julie step up the microphone? I'd like to ask her questions.
Oh, gosh. I was told I didn't have to speak.
You, when you got out of college and you came back to Putnam County, who'd you say talked you into looking into school psychology?
You did.
Can you repeat that slower?
David Buckles is responsible for me looking into school psychology. Thank you.
Please tell our congratulations, honey.
Thank you.
Can we get a photo up here, Ashley?
I paired her up with some good psychologists back then.
School psychologists are great people. I'm married to one, so.
Need more of them.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to the public comment section. Remember those speaking, I'll call your name. Remember, you have three minutes, and please state your name and address when you come to the mic, okay? Our first person is Michael Justin Edwards, and he's going to speak on the Children's Reading Center request to amend charter. And before we start, we will have thirty minutes. At the end of thirty minutes, then we'll have to decide as a board what, what we're going to do, okay? All right, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Justin Edwards. I was at 133 Timber Lane, Placca, Florida, 32177. I'm the board president of the Children's Reading Center Charter School, and I'm here today to request that the Putnam County School District approve an amendment to our charter counter, excuse me, our charter contract to allow us to serve K through six and up to twenty, two hundred and eighty-eight students. We received a denial for this request from Dr. Surrancey in the School of Administration on March 23rd due to the fact that our application to modify our charter contract was received after the March 1st deadline as provided in School Board Policy 9800 and Florida Statutes 102, I think it's 1002.331, print two. The application was not submitted until March 8th due to the fact that the Putnam County School District approved its plan to revitalize Putnam County School District facilities on February the 16th. Prior to its February 16th adoption, the school board's plan didn't include changing the current elementary schools to K to six. Once the school board's plan was adopted, the Children's Training Center worked as quickly as possible to verify that modifying our charter to serve K through six was physically possible, budgetarily feasible, and wanted by our students and families. We were not able to accomplish all of these things within less than two weeks from the school board's planned adoption until March the 1st. We feel the requested charter amendment is legal since School Board Policy 9800 addresses amendments to charter contracts in Part D of the section entitled Charter Contract and Contract Negotiation Process. This section does not provide a deadline within to make, within which to make an amendment requests. It does state that high-performing charter schools, which we are, must provide notice of amendments to add grades enrollment capacity by, enrollment capacity increases by March 1st. However, this is only to receive an amendment by right pursuant to Section 1002.331, Print Two of Florida Statutes. Any charter school regardless of high-performing status may still request an amendment to add grades or increase enrollment capacity at any time. Part D of this section of School Board Policy 9800 makes this clear. School Board Policy 9800 also makes special provisions for the school board to consider charter contract amendments necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of students. As noted, we think this amendment request meets that criteria. Amending the CRCS charter contract from a K five to K six will allow for a seamless transition, transition of CRCS students to the Putnam County School District, junior and senior high schools that will be in place for the 2021, 2022 school year. CRCS is requesting to make the same changes, adding sixth grade, that the school board had just decided to make to the school district's elementary schools. Without the requested amendment, two classes of CRCS students will not have the benefit of that seamless transition. They will have to make transitions to attend a new elementary school for a single year and make an additional transition to the junior and senior high schools in the 2022, 2023 school year. Mr. Theobald spoke earlier today about the positive effects of decreasing transitions on our students' health. We're working to avoid the strain on our students, and we're looking for you to help. We believe our charter contract amendment request is reasonable, meets the requirements of amendment to the school board's policy and Florida law. We think, we can think of no reasonable basis to deny this request that provide continuity and certainty to our two classes of rising sixth graders and for future children reading school charter students. We also, we ask this matter be placed as an emergency item on the school board agenda to authorize an amendment to the CRCS charter contract to offer K through six and serve up two hundred and eight students beginning the 2021 school year, 2021, 2022 school year. I appreciate the school board's time in considering this renewal request for our charter contract amendment.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker would be Jacqueline England on the Children's Reading Center.
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline England, and I live at 120 Belray Drive, Satsuma, Florida, 32189. I am the principal at the Children's Reading Center Charter School and have been for the past five years. At this time, we are only asking what is just and fair for our children at the Children's Reading Center. We are asking for no more than what all of the other fifth grade students in the county will receive next year. All children across the world have been through a lot this year. COVID has changed almost everything for these children in the school setting. We feel that all children should be shown grace and compassion for the upcoming school year. Mr. Theobald just stated there can be up to a six-month gap in learning for students transitioning to a new school. He also said they have to learn new staff and students, which can be burdensome. This certainly applies to our fifth graders who would have to transition this year and next year. For the record, we are a high-performing school, and we strive for excellence every day. We are asking that you show our children the same respect as all the other children in the county and allow us to add two sixth grade classes to our school. We have the finances, room, and the team to build a strong curriculum based on the Florida, Florida State standards. We are not asking Putnam County School Board for any additional funds to help us initiate this endeavor. We are simply asking for permission. Please do what is right and courteous and consider CRCS children as a part of all Putnam County children. All children deserve, deserve the same consideration when making a decision that will affect them not only academically, but also emotionally. Please allow them to have the same opportunities as every other fifth grader in the county. I have given you letters, a couple of letters, from parents who were unable to come today but wanted to have their voices heard. As Mr. Bowling stated, the plan is to revitalize, not hurt, any particular community. I'm asking that you take our children's mental health and well-being into consideration when making this decision. The school board has always been kind to CRCS and have supported us, so please support our community today. If this board continues to deny our request for an amendment, our next step unfortunately is to engage in the dispute resolution procedures in our charter contract. This calls for a meeting with the representatives of the parties to resolve the issue informally. We are asking for this meeting as soon as possible. We will make ourselves available. Time is of the essence to come to a solution for these rising sixth graders. Please take our sixth graders into consideration today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. England.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Melissa Gross Arnold from the Children's Reading Center.
Good afternoon, school board members, Superintendent Surrancey. My name is Melissa Gross Arnold, but I'm with the Arnold Law Firm, and I represent Children's Reading Center. You've heard from the board chair and you've heard from the principal. I just wanted to give you a bit of legal background. They did submit an application for amendment, and it, because they're a high-performing charter school, it appeared to be a high-performing amendment, but that wasn't their intent. Their intent was to submit a standard amendment under your school board policy, and under that, there's no deadline. There's no March 1 deadline. It's just an amendment, and both parties need to agree in order for it to, to be approved. The, the key here is that the school board can't just deny it without a reasonable basis. We came to your workshop today, we see how thoughtful you are about this restructuring and the plan. This school has been just as thoughtful. They saw your change, and then they moved immediately to do what is best for these two classes, just two classes, of rising sixth graders. So, just to be clear, if they had submitted a request by March 1, it would have been a high-performing request, and you would have had no discretion at all. They could just add a grade. So, in this instance, you all have this opportunity to work together on this amendment. And as you heard from the principal, if you deny it, there is a dispute resolution process. I'm not sure that's really necessary. I think it's just a matter of getting on the same page for this one year for these rising sixth graders and amend the charter contract. If, if you do deny, like I said, there'll be a one-year gap and then the next rising sixth graders will be coming into your junior, senior. Why not do it this year? Thanks so much for your consideration this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Staggs from the Children's Reading Center.
Hi, I'm Amanda Staggs. I'm at one oh four Sunset Point, Palatka, Florida. I'm here today to express my concern in the denial of the amendment to our school's charter. I speak today as a teacher and a parent at CRCCS. I'm primarily concerned that the denial of this amendment will cause undue stress upon our students. Our school was founded and built with the framework of the district in order to provide a school choice option for students and parents. And by changing the framework of the district and not allowing the amendment to our charter, you've chosen to ostracize our students during a major developmental shift in their life. We are asking that you extend the same opportunities to our students that you are extending to the students throughout the county. Our students deserve the chance to be educated in the place that they feel comfortable, a place where they can make progress, and a place where they have felt like home for the last six years. Instead, you're asking that we educate them, send them elsewhere for a year, then move them yet again to another school. This inconsistency and variation can prove to be detrimental to students, especially those who already struggle in their school and home lives. Research study after research study shows that students who do not feel that they belong report more issues with mental health. Pure logic would tell you the exact same thing. In a day and time when students' mental health is increasingly fragile, it seems unfair to force them into more changes, thereby creating an even stronger sense of not belonging. Academically, our students have made progress with the teaching methods and practices at our school. If these students were to have to change the type of curriculum they received or the manner in which they received it, it is highly likely that they will not be as successful, especially when their peers at other schools are not being affected by that exact same change. Previously, sixth grade was a transitional year for all students. Sixth graders had their own teachers, expectations, guidelines, and school. Now you're giving the district's sixth graders a chance to continue learning in the manner they were previously learning, but you're not extending the same grace to our CRCCS students. You are expecting our children to be the only group that is forced to make back-to-back transitions. We've come to this meeting to make our requests known to the public. If you choose to deny our request again, we've at least done our due diligence in letting the public know that the request has been denied, but it's not for a lack of trying. Our school is a proud school. We are only, we are one of only two consistently well-performing schools in your district. And this is not because we get lucky, it's because we work hard. Any good teacher will tell you, you can't make progress without relationships. And our status as a high-performing school should be evidence enough that we know our kids, we love our kids, and will do anything to educate our children. Our kids' education should matter more to you than a day on a calendar because it sure does to us. As Mr. Bowling mentioned in the February tenth school board workshop, the plan is to revitalize, not hurt, a particular community. By disallowing us to expand our framework model to match that of the district, we feel this is a direct blow to our school community. I implore you to reconsider the decision made and allow our students and parents the choice to remain at CRCCS and allow our school to operate under the same parameters and guidelines as every other school in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Madeline Price, Children's Reading Center.
Hi, I'm Madeline Price, M-A-D-A-L-Y-N-N.
Madeline, speaking to the microphone.
Pull the microphone down, baby.
Yeah, pull it down a little bit.
Hi, I'm Madeline Price, M-A-D-A-L-Y-N-N, P-R-I-C-E, one hundred eighty-nine East Banerville Road, Palatka, Florida, three two one seven seven. I think that the, the reading center should have sixth grade because I finally have friends and if I move schools, we will all have to go to a different school. I may never get to see them again. Second of all, I feel safe at my school and I'm actually getting taught. I just moved to CRCCS last year and it's very different than where I was before. At my old school, I felt like I wasn't being taught. I was on the computer a lot and I don't learn well using a computer. At the charter school, we do use computers, but our teachers actually teach us. They figure out what we don't know and go out of their way with after-school and small groups to help us understand. I feel this has helped me learn, has helped me learn way more than I did before. CRCCS is also smaller than my old school. I would easily get confused of where I was going in a bigger setting. Also, the larger schools have more behavioral problems because of it's easier to get away with stuff. A smaller school helps me feel safer than the bigger school. Finally, I would like to ask you to allow us to stay at our school for sixth grade instead of changing us for just one year. No one else will have to do this in the entire county, so why, so we shouldn't have to either.
Thank you, Madeline.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Denisea Price, Children's Reading Center.
Hi, my name is Denisea Price and my daughter goes to the Children's Reading Center. And I live at one eighty-nine East Banerville Road. Before my daughter started there in January of last year, she couldn't read hardly. She was on basically a first, second grade level and fourth grade. Since the year that they've worked with her, she enjoys reading. She has, nobody wanted to work with her because she has ADHD. So they took the time and they have small groups where she feels, she's able to ask questions where in the larger groups, she couldn't do it. She felt embarrassed. And to take her out of the school that she's in is detrimental to her. She's come so far and for her to go to a different school, it's, it's not fair to, it's not. And all we ask is just for y'all to leave them for one year so they can continue to work with them. They've come so far. And I'm there and I see them, I work in the cafeteria. And all the teachers there, they work hand in hand with every one of them. So it's, it's the best school. That's all we ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Coulson III.
Good evening. My name is.
I just said, good evening. You said, good evening.
Pull the microphone down.
My name is Michael Coulson. My name is Michael Coulson, M-I-C-H-A-E-L.
Michael, would you speak louder?
Yes, sir.
That outside voice is like when you're outside.
My name is Michael Coulson, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-C-O-L-S-O-N. Eleven sixteen Mosley Avenue, Palatka, Florida, three two one seven seven. I am a fifth grader at the Children's Reading Center Charter School. I've always been an honor roll student at CRCCS. One question for the board tonight. Why can't my class continue our education at the school we know and trust? My school feels so safe to me. I love this school. And now that I have the opportunity to stay another year at the Children's Reading Center Charter School, it's a blessing. I've had, I have gotten to know everyone at this school. And if every, every other school is getting a sixth grade, why can't we? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We have three. Next is Erin Welker, Children's Reading Center.
Oh, my dear. We're gonna have to get a stepstool or something. Bless his.
Hi, I'm Erin Welker, A-A-R-O-N-W-E-L-K-E-R. One, one fifty-four Westwood Drive Apartment, A three, in Interlocken, Florida, three two one four eight. I've been at CRCCS for six years. I love this school. I think we should have a sixth grade. Why switch, why switch when we should stay one more year? I don't want to switch schools for just one year. Some of us have been at this school for six years. We've grown, we've grown up together. We may not always get along, but we are like a family. Going to a different school would separate our family. I have friends here and the teachers and principals know me. I know I am expected to do my best, but I know the adults will be there if I fall. I know I am safe and loved at my school. So I say we should have a sixth grade. All the other elementary schools in the county are getting a sixth grade. Why should we be any different?
Oh, thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
And next, we have Erica Marie Judson, Children's Reading Center. Don't let him walk out from the cell.
Hi. My name is Erica Judson, E-R-I-K-A-J-U-D-S-O-N. I live at one hundred and eighteen West Washington Street in Interlocken. I am a paralibrarian of CRCCS since twenty fifteen. Elected members of the board and everyone else, especially my CRCCS family here tonight, good evening. My name is Erica Judson, but my kids call me Miss Ricky. I am the librarian of the Children's Reading Center Charter School. I am also a parent of a former CRCCS student, they're in seventh grade now, and a current kindergartner from Miss White's class. So I have the distinction of being both a parent and an educator. The Children's Reading Center is a public charter school, but I'm sure you all know we defy the stereotypes that other charters have set around the country. Along with learning the state's standards, our kids are able to experience art, science lab, computer labs, Spanish, music, and so much more throughout their educational journey in our domes. We are a small school, but we have consistently brought a high level of education to our students, oftentimes surpassing the levels of education they had previously received elsewhere, but always striving to provide the best that we are able to offer. Our state testing scores show that, but most importantly, our students, past and present, show that. Now that I've introduced myself and my school, let me move to the matter at hand. Our fearless leader, Ms. England, along with our board and other individuals around the community who are committed to ensuring the success of our students work tirelessly, and quickly, I might add, to get all the boxes checked by the eighth so we would be able to add sixth grade at our facility next school year. You have denied our request. It seems as though in a manner that directly disenfranchises our students. I implore you and urge you to reconsider. Allowing us to have a sixth grade would allow our students to blossom and grow in even more in an environment that they are familiar with and our faculty is more than qualified to take on the challenge of increasing our grade levels, a fact that you should already know. It would allow us to ensure that the foundation of our students' education is strengthened to where success in the future is easier. It is beneficial to our community, our school district, but most importantly, to our students. There are literally more beneficial reasons to allow us to have a sixth grade than to steal the opportunity for growth of our students because of any technicality. If you will not take my words to heart, take those of our students to heart. They are the future of this community and they are asking for your support about this specific issue. They are asking for you to allow us to grow our school and they're doing it because they feel just as passionately about this as we do. Will you deny them their request for their quality education? If you deny this request for CRCCS to have a sixth grade next school year, that is exactly what you're saying to them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And this is the last public comment card I have. Gregory Chazell. Chazell.
Hello, my name is Gregory Chazell, G-R-E-G-O-R-Y-S-H-A-Z-E-L. I live at twenty-one oh five Carr Street, Palatka, Florida, three two one seven seven. I am a fifth grade student at CRCCS. I have attended this school since kindergarten. And throughout these years, the school staff and students have become a part of my family. I love going to this school because the staff here are very caring and supportive when it comes to learning. And our school doesn't have any violence or discrimination towards one another. Reading and math are some of the major subjects that we focus on and because of all, and because of this, it has made me become stronger in these areas and expanding my vocabulary. I am able to teach some of my family members that attend other schools that aren't focusing so much in these areas by showing the learning techniques that I have been taught at CRCCS. And that makes me feel good about myself and my school knowing that I can help others because of the way my school has taught me and knowing that we have such great teachers. I love, also love that this school is not overcrowded and there is enough staff available who are caring and willing to give extra assistance to students that need it. CRCCS is a great school and I have always loved it. It would be a pleasure for me to be able to continue my sixth grade year at CRCCS with this family that I already know versus going toward new school just for one year with new school staffing and students. I know that if CRCCS does not get this approval to add sixth grade students, to add sixth grade, to add a sixth grade, there is no doubt in my mind that the staff here won't have the students here prepared for the next grade level as they always have done throughout the years. I hope this meeting tonight is taken into considerations for myself and for my fellow classmates that certainly attend CRCCS.
Thank you. Thank you.
Gregory, do you, do you know a famous Palatka High football player named Greg Chazell? Never heard of him? Okay. I remember one, okay.
So there is no more public comment? So we'll move to the public hearing, the amendment of the school zone maps. Is, did, are we having a presentation or we just?
Well, we're just, as far as the, as far as anything, is there any changes to that?
There are no changes to the map as described in the original presentation to the board.
So did the original presentation have the amendment? Is that what that says, the amendment of school? We're just voting on what we were presented? Okay.
Okay.
Was it a public hearing? Did we make a motion on this?
We did.
All right, I'll make a motion. We approve the amendment of the school zone maps.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Jane Crawford to accept the amendment of the school zone maps. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. There were no items approved by the superintendent. There were no items approved by the superintendent under the emergency powers, so we move to the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. McGinnis, do you have anything you'd like to pull?
I have nothing to pull.
Mrs. Crawford?
I have nothing to pull.
Mr. Buckles?
No ma'am.
Ms. Gilliard?
I have nothing to pull.
And I have nothing to pull.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a, a, a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Mr. David Buckles to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None. So motion carries five-zero. Now. We are out of regular session and into emergency session. Our first item is the discussion input and action recommendation of naming committee for Mellon Elementary.
Do we, um, I, I would like to make a motion that we approve. I would like to make a motion that we approve the, um, recommendation of the naming committee of Mellon Elementary to Mellon.
Mr. Bowen is here to answer any questions you have.
What was it?
Student Center.
I didn't see what.
Mellon Learning Center.
Mellon Learning Center, okay. I didn't know if we made a motion and seconded, then we could discuss it, or?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Jane Crawford and a second by Mr. David Buckles. And is there any discussion?
Um, I have a question. What was the vote on that?
It was a unanimous vote for Mellon Learning Center. There were several that we, um, did, uh, talk about. We talked about, uh, Kimberly Stone Miller School. We talked about, um, retaining the E.H. Miller name and bringing it over to the Mellon campus. There were a couple of other names that, um, I think Legacy Learning Center. But with regards to, um, to respect for the district economically and to also carry on the heritage of the, the location, Mellon Learning Center seemed like the best fit, and we all unanimously agreed.
That's good, that it was unanimous.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five-zero. Our second item for discussion is a recommendation of the naming committee for Interlocken High School.
Leo's, is Leo coming to speak, Thomas?
Yeah, I asked one member of each committee to join me tonight so they can all represent their committee in case there were any questions or just wanted any kind of elaboration.
So should, should we vote and then get discussion, or, or nominate? How do we do that?
You can vote and get a second for discussion, and then.
Yeah, you can have the motion and then discussion.
And then you, you can call it for a voter.
Or they can make a presentation, and then you can make a motion, and either way is fine.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we, we approve the, the naming of, of the committee. Obviously, there was a lot of thought in, that went into this, so, uh, I've talked to Mr. Bowden, and I got a story from, um, Mr. Granger and well, so I, I feel comfortable making that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Mr. Bud McGinnis on the discussion of the Interlocken High School name. And now we're going to have discussion about that.
Okay, I want to start. I was, uh, you know, very much concerned, uh, at Robert H. Jenkins, uh, where Jenkins Middle School was named in honor of him. A lot of people assume that he died in the war. He gave his life. He saved, uh, the one that operated the machine gun. When we first talked about this, I mentioned to Jane Crawford, I said, "All I want is that his name is not lost forever." Our children need to know. Enough has been. Anyway. And so they did say that they had talked about some other things, so I'm just gonna let it go, and that's my feeling.
Yes, ma'am, the, this particular committee had a dual recommendation. First, it was a five-four vote. It was very contentious, uh, lots and lots of spirited debate, as you can imagine. Uh, but at the end of the day, five moved to, uh, name the new combined school, Interlocken Junior/Senior High, and four was Robert H. Jenkins Junior, Junior/Senior High. But they have a second recommendation for the, uh, board to consider, and that is to reconvene another committee, uh, to name the elementary school. Because the elementary school came up, it was battered around by the nine-person committee, and to a person, all of them thought it was a really good idea, and it was a unanimous decision to ask the board to ask me to, or direct me to convene another naming committee so we can consider naming Interlocken Elementary, Robert H. Jenkins.
Would the difference be that the money involved?
We talked about money a lot, um, and, and perhaps that weighed, that factored into the decision process of, um, some of the committee members. But it was talked about, uh, considerably.
How, how did the committee members that wanted it to, uh, the high school to be Robert H. Jenkins Junior/Senior High, how did they feel about naming the elementary school?
They were very much in favor of it. They were somewhat disappointed because of the high school, or the combination school isn't. Uh, and they, um, I've got the, and I'm speaking about other people's emotions, but I got the impression that, um, they almost looked at it as a consolation. You know, if I can't have it, I guess we'll have to go with it. But we really, um, wanted Jenkins, uh, Robert H. Jenkins' name on the junior/senior high school. As a matter of fact, the, uh, comment from members from the public continued on after the committee. Um, and we, you know, I kind of redirected and we, we adjourned.
Um, I, I have a question, because, uh, the new Interlocken Elementary School is yet to be built. If we were, could we change the name? Obviously, this would be, or for discussion, but would the name be effective immediately so that we don't lose the Robert H. Jenkins' name?
That was, uh, the committee's request, that we name the existing school Robert H. Jenkins, and then, uh, of course, they're in the, uh, the mindset that they hope that the new school would also be named Robert H. Jenkins.
The actions of the prior board can't find the actions of a future board. If a future board decided they wanted to change the name, they, they could convene and do that, so that's one thing. I, I have to, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm a little disappointed, but I did talk to Mr. Granger, and we, we're looking at a few other options. But don't really have a lot to do with the school board, but if, if we get our ducks in a row, we might ask the board for a support letter of something in the future. Not related to the school, but maybe some of the highways around Interlocken, so we'll, a few other things.
Is this something we would vote on at, in a, at a subsequent meeting, not today, right, to name?
I'm not sure, it's a committee recommendation. They were there to, uh, talk about naming that particular facility, not another, but they did want to deliver that recommendation to the board, so I would defer to, uh, our, our legal counsel.
The recommendations come from the committee, through the superintendent's office, and then go to you. So you can either accept or deny them. It's kind of like a confirmation process for a Supreme Court justice.
Oh, Lord.
So, but so, so you can, I mean, you guys can deliberate, you can talk, it's not like that information doesn't go back to the naming committee, but if you can either accept what the naming committee has sent to you, or, or you can say you don't want to accept it, and that'd be okay, just would have to go back to the naming committee, and then the process would start back over again.
I'm assuming the naming committee would have the same group of, oh, so it would be?
Wouldn't necessarily have to.
Right, I mean. But they could be.
I think if we went back to the re, you said, uh, I don't like what the, I don't like the recommendation, uh, we won't accept the recommendation as it is, and it's two recommendations. If we don't accept the one to rename the school, go back, then it would be the same committee. But when we're talking about forming a new committee for a new school, I would think it would be a new committee, um, not the same committee.
Could some of the members stay in the committee, or no?
We could pick our same person, couldn't we?
That's a, a next question, too, I would think so.
The, there's no requirement.
Then it's not our right.
And he gets picked between superintendent and assistant superintendent, so if they decide to convene a different committee the next time, that's their problem.
Well, according to our procedures, each board member, um, selects one person.
But we could pick our same person.
We have the right to choose whomever we want.
I think so, it doesn't specify, so I would say yes.
Right.
The board does have a right to choose who they want.
Whomever, right.
In spite of, of, um, you know, committee, I, I hate to override a committee like that, but I, there probably is a cost factor that I have not thought of.
I just think it's too important not to consider other options to name the school after Jenkins. Especially to the people of Interlocken.
And only two hundred and fifty Congressional Medal of Honor recipients. I, I think that's correct, Leo, is that correct? It's only two hundred and fifty Congressional Medal of Honor recipients.
Yes, and it's only twenty-three in Florida, and out of the sixty-six counties, Public County had one, and that's, uh, Robert Hendry Jenkins. And if you go on, uh, remembering Robert Hendry Jenkins, U.S. Marine, Medal of Honor recipient, and recipient, i- it's not a, it's not, let's, let's look at the Medal of Honor. A lot of folks I asked, and different ones I asked, really don't understand the Medal of Honor. It's not just naming the school after a person, you naming it after, uh, Medal of Honor. This, this award, uh, this is, it's not a ward that you go to the firing range and quantify yourself, you know? This young man went in Marine Corps straight out of high school, so it's not, there's no background to look at. You'll look back in his background and try to find something, yeah, he was an honor roll student. Yes, he ran track and set records. Sure, he was in the backfield of the football team and set records, I mean, what, what are you gonna find, you know? And to not name the high school, I went to Interlocken High School, you know, my junior year. I had to be, come back because they didn't have a band, so I was honored at the timeframe to come back to be in the band in Central Academy, you know, and that's where he walked the walls at. I went to Central Academy, you know? So I'm sad about that closing. I'm most sad about Robert Jenkins Middle School, and, and I really hurt that the Interlocken High School is not being at the, but I can, I can, I can, I can. I'm hurt, I'm not stuttering, but I can live with his name not going away. And I understand about the, uh, Sunshine Ruth, I understand about Robin Ruth, I'm, I'm clear on that, but come on, we, we're human. This is God's work. And to get another renaming committed, that's time, you gotta, uh, get the bill, boy, you gotta get this changed, you gotta get that changed, you're talking about the, the year coming up. So that's time consuming. If you go and get the same, and you have the choice to get the same members, and it was unanimously nine, say, let's go ahead and name this existing school. It was presented to me by the new school, that's ten years down the road, if the bond passed, that, that, you shouldn't keep it.
All right. Let, let, listen, here, here's what I would have to do, I'd have to withdraw my motion. I withdraw my motion, and I'll let somebody else make another motion.
So, but it's, it's still a separate motion, right? The one to, to name Interlocken, Interlocken Junior/Senior, and then one for the elementary school?
You have a split committee, it's up to the board, the majority's or?
No, it, uh-uh, it was five to four.
Five to four.
Right, five to four in favor of naming.
That's pretty, that's pretty slim, that's pretty slim.
But it was, to, to your original question, it was two separate motions and, uh, two sep- two separate recommendations from the one committee. One is, um, by five to four, five to four vote, um, name the facility Interlocken Junior/Senior High. And the other recommendation, uh, to the board is to reconvene another naming committee with the purpose of considering the name Robert H. Jenkins for the existing Interlocken Elementary School.
So it, it couldn't be because they made the motion, or they made the agreement nine to zero at that meeting to name the elementary school?
Convening a committee, yes, ma'am.
Right, so we couldn't make that motion to, to name the elementary school?
You can make any motion, and you get a second, and then you can vote on it. If, if, what I'm hearing is board members are concerned and would like to perhaps make another motion, and you're gonna make one anyway, so I guess I, do I vote on this, Lex?
And my, my concern is this. If we go with, uh, Interlocken, uh, Junior/Senior High School, okay, we pick another committee, and that committee X-nay the name.
You mean X-nay Interlocken Junior/Senior High?
No, 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 no. Interlocken Junior/Senior High will be done. It will be the name, but I'm saying the new committee, the new committee we select, may, may want to name it, um, I don't know.
Gilliard.
Yeah, right, but, but, uh, yeah, 'cause I'm, I'm, I'm more serious now than a heart attack. I just, I.
That's why I'm saying we should vote now.
I, I, I just can't walk out of here with, with the uncertainty, I, I can't.
I know, that's why I think we should make a motion.
But can it be legally binding because it wasn't a second committee?
I'll have to withdraw my current motion if that's not, if y'all like that.
No, your current motion's fine, because we're dealing with that one school.
Now, if you send the same committee back, and I was there, and Mr. Granger can, uh, probably echo what I'm about to say. If you send that same committee back to, uh, say basically we didn't like your decision, talk about it some more, I don't know, I, I, each, the five who voted for Interlocken High felt as strongly as the four who voted Robert H. Jenkins. I don't think, you know, deliberating back and forth again in that fashion is gonna change the vote.
No, uh, wait a minute, let me make sure he understood me. What I'm saying is, I'm great, I'm great with Interlocken Junior/Senior High. If we're gonna walk out of here knowing that the other will be as they said it's gonna be, because once we say yes.
Then it's a done deal.
It's a done deal, but if we get a new group of people and they say, "Name it Timbuktu," or, or Hooterville, it's done.
They may convene on the elementary school and decide not to name it.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
Let me ask Lex, Lex, let me ask you.
Let me, let me.
There were two recommendations, weren't there?
Yes, yes.
But they're not written recommendations.
Can we make a motion, even though it's not on the agenda, and go ahead and name it Robert H. Jenkins Elementary School?
You can't do that at this meeting.
But it is written.
I mean, why put, why put another committee up if we're, if we know how we feel?
Well, it's the same thing, um, when the president nominates a Supreme Court justice. He can, he can nominate the same person over again, but he knows what's gonna happen. So usually they nominate a different name, even though it is the same president deciding. I'm sensing a very strong message to that committee.
I need to ask Thomas something.
They're asking, they're asking, can they name Interlocken Elementary Robert H. Jenkins?
It says, it says.
You said that was a written recommendation.
It is written.
Yeah.
Can I withdraw? I mean, I, we can take my motion, and if it's still named, the elementary school will be named the Robert H. Jenkins Elementary School.
You can do, you can vote yes or no on any of the recommendations from the committee.
This written recommendation has both recommendations in it. It may not have been put on the agenda like that, but that's what it stays.
Wendy even said to me, um, I forgot to put the second recommendation from, I said, well, load it quick.
The mo- motion I made was.
Yeah, well then do it again.
Was what was right here.
Right.
It was, the motion I made was to accept, okay.
Do it.
I'm, I'm, the motion I made was to accept that the members, uh, the motion, uh, the recommendation of the members of the school facility naming committee, which have convened and we recommend to name Interlocken High School and C.H. Price Middle School, Interlocken Junior and Senior High School. We also unanimously, the board. We also unanimously, the board, this committee did, recommend to the board that a naming committee be convened to name Interlocken Elementary School, Robert H Jenkins. I don't know why we would need a naming committee.
We don't.
We don't, I don't think. Do we, Lex?
It's written right here.
Their recommendation, I mean, were they, were they charged with looking at the elementary school too to name?
They made, they, I'll take blame for that. They made that particular recommendation because I thought we would have to have another separate committee for Interlocken Elementary.
Well, it, it is.
So that's why the recommendation was crafted like that. If they had had the power to name Interlocken, if they thought that they had the authority to recommend that, that night, they would have.
They weren't there to.
And that's what, that was the will of the committee.
All right, Lex, I know it's a small deviation from past practice on naming, but is it an acceptable path?
Yeah. If you're, if that was a, it was a, it was a voted on recommendation from the committee?
And that was the will of the committee, and the language was tweeted based on my bad knowledge of.
Well, I, I made the motion based on what I read, and I didn't put the part of a naming committee to be convened.
I didn't even see it.
I didn't even see that. I, I didn't either. I, I just kind of assumed that that was what was going on. So I'm like Sandy. I mean, a, a, a future board can override the action of a prior board. But I don't think that's going to happen. I think there'll be more things named after Robert H Jenkins in West Putnam. And I, I'd like to go ahead and, and just, let's vote my recommendation up and down. That would be to name Interlocken Junior Senior High School and accept the committee's recommendation, and go ahead and name Interlocken Elementary School, Robert H Jenkins Elementary School.
Okay, so do we need to remove the, the motion and the second that we had?
Well, that's.
He has to rescind.
Make a new motion, second.
I'll, I'll rescind my motion, and I want to make a new motion.
Then you made the new motion.
I made, I did, well, read it again. My new motion is to accept the recommendation to name the existing Interlocken High School and Price Middle School, the Interlocken Junior Senior High School. 'Cause you got another name in there, you got Price name in there, Interlocken Junior Senior High School. And that at the same time, we go ahead and, and entertain naming the Interlocken Elementary School the Robert H Jenkins Elementary School.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Jane Crawford to name Interlocken High School, C.H. Price Middle School, Interlocken Junior Senior High School. And we also have a motion to recommend that Interlocken Elementary School be renamed Robert H Jenkins Elementary School. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll work on that other thing we talked about.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. We are out of emergency session, and, uh, we have no unfinished business. We do have one item under new business to grant the emergency powers to the superintendent.
Madam Chairman, I, I make a motion, we continue to allow the superintendent Searcy to use his good judgment and ability to avert crisis and chaos at all corners when he needs to make an action by giving him these powers.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandy Gillyard to grant emergency powers to the superintendent. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries five zero. Um, reports by the board members, board attorney, and the superintendent. Mrs. Gillyard, would you like to go first?
Just have two things. Um, I'd like to ask, well, first, let me give you the, the history, and then I'm going to ask that we do something. Um, on, um, Easter, uh, Fay Wright, three, just less than two months ago, we acknowledged her retirement from the Putnam County School District for forty and a half years, forty and three full, something like that. Um, uh, she ended up her, her, her career out at, um, James A. Long, starting down in Crescent City. And so I'm going to ask, uh, well, she went to be with the Lord on, on Easter. I'm gonna ask that we observe a moment of silence in honor of her and her dedication. She would not have even retired. She was still working, and her health failed, and she went into retirement. And so if we would acknowledge her with a moment of silence.
Thank you.
And the final thing, uh, Rada Nation, just want to commend them again for their teamwork, for the use of young people and training them up to become future leaders, and showing how, uh, even though you may be departmentalized at, at schools, you can work together. Junior ROTC and welding, merge, got the job done. Just want to give them a thumbs up. I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gillyard. Mr. Buckles?
Let, let me pass the word and then, then catch me.
What about me? Okay, we'll pass to Ms. Crawford. Ms. Crawford?
Um, I just want to thank everyone for their thoughts and prayers during my recuperation. I'm still recuperating. Um, it's testing season again. Oh, my gosh. It just, it keeps coming. Um, and these are very different, difficult times. Uh, there are still parents who don't want their children to come back to school to take a test, but they have to take it on site. So, uh, it may be a problem getting all our, our students tested. So, uh, I, I just appreciate everyone's efforts, um, for what they're doing to get as many kids possible tested.
And schools are cleaning and offering like very remote places in the school for kids to.
That's wonderful.
They're, they're really trying to accommodate, to alleviate parents' concerns.
Yeah, I, I was speaking to Mandy last night with her, um, Putnam Virtual School kids. And there were, she said she had gotten calls from several parents that they're scared for their kids to come to school. And she and Renee are trying to, you know, come up with a very, very safe way for those kids to test. It's not an easy thing to do under any circumstances, to test that many students. But to have to test under these circumstances, it's, it's something else. Um, I would just like to say to all the people that were here from the Charter Center, the, the board did not make the decision to deny their, um, application. And I would like to go on record, um, as supporting their request to amend their charter to include a sixth grade. I've yet to hear nor see any reasonable explanation why we shouldn't do that. And I see absolutely right, no reason not to continue to work with them. They have been wonderful partners with Putnam County School System. And, um, I just think that we need to do whatever we can to help them make this possible. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford.
I'm ready to move.
Mr. Buckles?
Oh, I can't say enough about our principals and our workshop. I think they, they.
Oh, they got it going on.
They hit a grand slam today. I, it's very important that we get this message out to the public in, on, on our website and let, and then we have it to defer people to watch, so they'll understand what's going on. And, and, you know, you speak at the Charter School, it looks like they're trying to mimic what we, we're doing. And, and look, I did a quick figure on, it looked like fifty-three more students that they're trying to pick up by doing this. But there's no guarantee that there wouldn't be three hundred more students, you know?
They don't, they can't house three hundred more students.
Those and theirs, yeah.
They can.
I, I, well, anyway, I mean, you, you, I, I get it, but you don't want to go broke at the same time. Um, the, the principals did a wonderful job. We, we got some, some big decisions coming with, with, uh, these changes that superintendent and his staff are proposing along with state agencies. So we're, we're going to, we're going to take it one, one step and take another step. And I'm pleased that we were at least able to get Robert Jenkins' name on, probably, if I had the, if I had my way, I'd probably name all schools Robert Jenkins, the school system, but that, you know, twenty, what, twenty-three in the state of Florida, you know? That's, that's something. Anyway, uh, C.H. Price was a former superintendent, and his name will not be lost. It'll be in the archives, but, uh, he certainly, I was a school superintendent, I never, I never jumped on a grenade for anybody. So I, I gotta tell you, my heart goes out to his family, and I'm very glad we were able to accommodate, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mr. McGinnis?
Okay. Okay, that was, uh, you know, some great presentations, um, at our, at our meeting today. And, um, uh, for me, I've attended Pedro, uh, Pedro at IHS and Pedro at Crescent City High School Baseball. And baseball's winding down, thank goodness.
Girls, girls softball, yeah.
It's really cold. Um, and I was just looking a year ago, I was just reminded about how our teachers are, are just on the status of educational rock stars, and that they're still right up there.
They are.
And, um, really excited about our presentation workshop today, about where we're heading. I'm really ecstatic. I talked with Mr. Granger on the phone, and I never did get to catch him up with him. I spoke with him before the meeting, though, and, um, we shared our hearts together about Robert H Jenkins and, uh, um, the, the whole idea about it going to the elementary school is, uh, outstanding to me because it's just like you instill it in those young people. And, uh, I, I even threw it out there for him. It was the Robert H Jenkins Academy. It's pretty quiet in here.
Well, I mean.
You'd have to name another motion.
I tried to, but I didn't get my mouth out. I didn't get my mouth open in time, but, um, that's about, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. I just have a couple of things. I agree, um, completely. Uh, the presentations were really good, and, and we should be extremely proud of our principals. Um, I was really happy, Master Sergeant Pelahatch works tirelessly with the J.R.O.T.C. They are in, um, the grocery store, bagging groceries, raising money, and the community really supports him, and he really supports the community. Um, the sign really genuinely is very, very, um, wonderful. Um, also, the, the school psychologist to be, you know, named in the whole Northeast Florida, that's a, a really big deal. And, um, we're very lucky to have her in our district. And, um, I did go to, uh, well, via Zoom, um, an insurance meeting where the committee discussed, um, and Benji Bates is working on, um, different materials, videos for, to educate, which is exactly what we asked for the insurance committee to do, to educate our employees on the HSA. And, um, so that's in the works, and it's, it's gonna be not down to the last minute. They, they are working on them right now. Um, I went to, uh, uh, I don't, I went to Middleton Bernie, um, two weeks ago. And there's some really, really exciting news that's gonna come out for Middleton Bernie, and, um, I'm just really excited about it.
I hope you can.
No, I don't know if I'm supposed to say, maybe, maybe Dr. Searcy will say. Um, and, um, I get to go and proctor the, um, writing test and, um, tomorrow at, at Crescent City High School. And I look forward to that because I, I cherish, um, all the moments that I'm at the high school. And, um, and so I'm just praying that the kids do their best, and that the environment is safe, and that they feel comfortable taking the test, and that they have a really good meal in the morning. And, um, that's all I have. Mr. Taylor?
I've been working today. Always out of town, it's been a crazy day.
Slow week.
Very slow week.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dr. Searcy?
Yeah, Laura France gave me the C-word, Cambridge at Middleton Bernie, so.
Yay!
So that makes us a K through twelve.
Application process with Cambridge, so, uh, that's what it's about. Caught me off guard. Please, please make a note on your calendar. We are, uh, gonna bring this to you for a vote next, next board meeting on the twentieth. But I'd like to have only one board meeting in May, and, uh, that would involve canceling May fourth and May eighteenth, and just have a single board meeting May eleventh.
That hurt my feelings.
May eleventh.
I'll bring, we'll bring that to.
That's disrespectful.
Yeah, we'll bring that to you for a vote, uh, on April twentieth. Um, again, I want to thank our high school principals, uh, they work so close together, and there's a lot of camaraderie there. Uh, I think our kids are in great hands, as you all agree. And finally, I want to introduce our new, as of today, tonight, our new Director of Community Relations, Ashley McCool.
Ooh.
And she is gonna be, she's gonna be in charge of, she's actually the Director of our Communications Department, right, Ashley?
Correct.
So, um, you're gonna be seeing a lot of Ashley, she's gonna be pushing out a lot of information.
Selling that bond reference.
And that's, that's gonna be one of her, she's our point of contact for that. Even though we can't go out and campaign for it, she provides information. We can't, as a district, on district time and district money, we can't do that, but we can.
But I can talk to people.
We can inform people, yes.
You can speak at a rotary meeting or something at lunchtime.
Right, but Ashley will be the, uh, kind of the point person for that. But more than that, she's gonna be overseeing all of our district communication, especially with our strategic plan. And, uh, Ashley's got a lot of ideas, and, um, can't wait to see.
Perfect person to do it.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah.
Very excited.
Yep. Great deal. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, anyone have anything further?
We have a, um, master board meeting too, right?
Oh, yeah, when's that?
The twenty-first of April?
This month.
At nine o'clock.
Right in here, nine.
Nine o'clock, and it's.
That next week?
In here.
Right up until the twenty-first.
Twenty-first, right.
Uh, that's.
They have donuts and coffee set up and.
Yeah.
I mean, we can talk about that later.
We can talk about that. That's a great idea. Okay.
And I like food.